This is an Acton, regular Acton Planning Board meeting of April 16, I think we keep the minutes for after our public informational meeting here and just some reminder not to adjourn before we take care of those things. Thank you folks for coming out and hopefully we can clarify what this zoning amendments are all about for you today. And I hope all of you have got a copy of the ballot as you will see the blue paper is what you'll see on June 9 when we go into vote. And the white sheets that Brenda made up for us, if you look on the very bottom, you'll see one is designated as Planning Board Amendment. And the second, two sheets which are, have a green highlight on them are Board of Selectmen proposed amendments, both kind of covering the same bit of ground. Should we start by giving you a brief explanation of, I guess, what these proposals are, how they came to be? And as succinctly as I can, I'll try to explain what they are about. The first proposal was originated back in January 15 of this year by the Planning Board after a discussion in several meetings. Kenny, Paul.
Yeah, which, are you looking at the one with the chart or the order?
I'm going after the white one first because I think it's more coherent than the ballot. I'll explain how the two relate to one another.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. I don't mean to confuse you, but there's a bit of a chart there that will make the explanation I'm going to be giving to you a little more clear, I hope. Anyway, January 15 of this year, the Planning Board recommended that after some discussions over a year's time with Ken and one meeting, or two meetings, when the Selectmen came down and spoke to us concerning a worry that they had, that they were getting some complaints in the Code Enforcement Office and the Selectmen were getting some complaints, that the provisions that were enacted back in, at the meeting of September 29, 2011, is represented by this map behind Brenda here, where we protected wetlands smaller than 10 acres with a sliding scale buffer of 25 foot per acre, starting at 2 acres, yielding a 50-foot buffer, going up to the state standard of 10 acres, yielding a 250-foot buffer. There's no buffers above that. So what the Planning Board did in the face of a kind of a yellow flag from Kenny was we made some provisions so that the resource protection areas outside of shoreline zone, and that would be these small little areas not directly contiguous with our great ponds that are sprinkled townwide, would be eligible for some incursion under this proposal that's going to the voters in June, with the conditions that are outlined on page, the back page of your Planning Board sheet there. You'll see. I'll just walk through them really quickly with you, just to stir up a question if you have one. Risk condition is, would be that there is no location on the property other than a location within the Resource Protection District where this structure can be built. What that means essentially is if you have no land in excess of the acres that you need to build your addition or your little shed or garage, you can make an incursion into that buffer zone as to any on the map. Okay, but you have to follow the following conditions. B, the lot on which the structure is proposed was established and recorded in the York County Register of deeds before the adoption of the Resource Protection District. So any lots that came into being after the implementation of this zoning at 9/29/11 would not be eligible for this provision. And C, all proposed buildings, sewage disposal systems and other improvements are located on natural ground slopes of less than 20%. And two, located outside of 75 feet horizontal distance of a stream or uplaying the edge of a wetland. That second condition under C, as we've gotten an interpretation from Ken, means essentially that nothing can come any closer than 75 feet really to any of the wetlands, no matter how big or small they are. That would include septic tank, I think septic by 75 feet, I think they need a variance for that. Anybody remember that? Okay, so that would be further conditioned by some state sanitary waste law. D, the total ground floor area of all principal and accessory structures within the Resource Protection Buffer is limited to a maximum of 1,500 square feet. And the way we've been explaining that to ourselves and from Kenny, the sense of that is you could build a new structure of 30, excuse me, of 1,500 square feet, and that is a, that's the first law. It could be a two-story dwelling, but the footprint cannot exceed 1,500 square feet. And just to get a sense of that, that would be a square that would be 38 feet on the side. So that's a good piece of real estate, you know what I'm saying? Or again, it could be an accessory structure, a garage or a shed or something like that. You want to take this in two bites and we'll talk about any questions that arise on this first section of the Planning Board.
Can I ask one question? Number B.
Yeah.
If you had a piece of land that you wanted to put a house, and it was in Resource Protection, would you be able to do it yet after 2011, but you'd have to adhere to the new rules?
This would pertain to either, the language we took this from, Joe, the state language said, let me read it to you so I don't mess that up. The original state language, which we amended and made less stringent, said, "The lot on which the structure is proposed is undeveloped." We struck that out and thereby making it, so the intent was to make it either undeveloped or developed lot.
Okay.
So, I don't know if I can, if I answered your question, but that's, so we tried to, the intent of our work on this was to address the concern that had been expressed to us by Kenny and the Select Board and make some provisions so there's a less strict regulation surrounding incursion into these smaller things.
So on number D, 1,500 square feet of your ground floor, so you could have a second story, which would be another 1,500 feet, so you have like 3,000 feet of building out of a little area?
Yeah, but the, the intent of this is the 1,500 square feet, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we said this was merely the footprint, this could be the two-story. Well, yeah. And that's, that would be, while I told you that, 38 feet on the side.
Total, the total ground floor, okay.
Yeah. Is it feasible, then you might be able to have a structure of 1,500 square feet and then have another conter, outside the buffer and have it conterminous with 1,500 square feet inside the buffer for a total of 3,000 square feet?
Yeah, that was one of the questions that we kept rolling around too, and my understanding is we came to the conclusion that yes, that you're limited to 1,500 square feet within the buffer, but it doesn't, but you could still have additional buildings outside.
It could be conterminous with the 1,500 square feet. You could have a 3,000 square foot footprint on your property is what I'm asking.
Right, but only 1,500 could be.
Only 1,500 could encroach on the buffer.
Right.
I'd like to ask, I'm sorry, my name is Williams, Dr. W. L. Williams. I live on Sunset Boulevard off of H. Road. My next question is what role do these non-shorline buffers play as far as anti-pollution? I can understand the buffers around the shorelines of our lakes, but as far as the ones that are not directly shoreline around the lakes, what role do they play as far as anti-pollution? You folks please weigh in here if I express my everything. Should I hold questions until later? No, that's fine. In my mind, I'm just speaking for myself now. They, if you look on the map that we're working on here, this one behind Brenda, you'll see in many instances, streams, first order streams or second order streams flow into or out of these wetlands and find their way into our great ponds, or they're just part of a stream network that is of interconnected wetlands. We generally think that wetlands are valuable for water recharge areas. They store and release slowly excess storm waters, and they're critical wildlife habitats. And when they were initially suggested to the town as warranting protection, it was with those three criteria in mind. We felt the state standard, particularly in the town of Acton, the state standard which starts at protection at 10 acres was not protective enough of our water resources. This town derives 75% of its tax monies from shoreline zoning. I am really, I'm not a hydrogeologist, but a good bit of that water from the wetlands finds its way into, particularly the larger ones, the 10-acre and larger, which we'll get to in the Silkman's proposal, finds their way into the great ponds or is directly contiguous to the great ponds. Having lived in two areas that have a lot of wetlands, Louisiana, which made a mess of theirs and paid the price for it, and living on Prince Edward Island in Maritime, Canada, that has a very rigid restrictions as far as the contamination of all wetlands, it would seem to me that we're not going to see any deleterious effect from allowing these non-shorline wetlands to be encroached upon immediately. But I should think that over time, and maybe there is a geologist here who could say something about that, over time, over five years or 10 years, it may make a big difference in the quality of the lakes around our town. And I'm just wondering, I agree with you that they're important, and it's why people come here to live, and why people come here in the summer to have holidays, that eventually our lakes will be detrimentally affected if we change what we're doing now, which I thought was quite lawful. Do we have a geologist here amongst the committee members and all that could make a statement about that and answer my question? I don't think we'll see any bad things happen immediately, but I think over the, over the next 10 years, we're going to see a faster deterioration of our lakes because that's what my impression was, that these non-shorline buffer zones do collect water streams that eventually end up into the lakes, and that we are starting to compromise and sort of bite away at the ordinances that's present on the paper. I'll shut up now.
Well, this is a good time of year to go and look at those resource protection areas because that's where all the water is just gone, the snow melt's gone down into these areas. You can see there are great filters for the water. I mean, if you had more impervious surfaces there or less vegetation, I mean, these are the filters that they filter the water that goes into the great ponds. Once the water's flowing, you're sitting in a body, it's no longer being filtered, it's just there. So you need the wetlands to filter the, you know, runoff, especially this time of year in that beautiful areas too, if you ever, all times of year, it's a great scenic resource of the town to have these.
Absolutely.
Areas, they draw people here.
My second question was, how many people have complained about the present ordinance as it stands? And when you're buying property here, aren't you told ahead of time that in fact you have a buffer area that you must adhere to as far as construction on the buffer area?
Buyer beware.
Buyer beware.
Because they're usually talking to a.
Resident agent from elsewhere.
Right.
But I mean, the fact is that when you do buy something, there are restrictions oftentimes. And I would think this would just be a part of keeping our lakes pristine, is to make sure that you adhere to what you signed for, purchase a piece of property that has restrictions on it.
Yeah.
Has anyone here decided that maybe the ordinance that we have already in place ought to stay in place? I see that this committee has made some recommendations and have diluted this a little bit.
Well, let me, well, that might be more clear as we continue.
Okay, okay.
The issue is that there were people that owned property that for whatever reason were not, the zoning was changed after they had already bought the property. And it has impacted some building lots, but we're not sure to what extent. Some building lots have been impacted when the zoning was changed. So that's the issue.
Is there any way you could find out how many people that brought this situation to this level? Like 10 people and they gave abatements to five people, or the information so that we can get a better insight as to what is going on?
I didn't want to get into this.
Mr. Chair? It's a direct question.
Yeah. Well, can I answer that one, Mr.? When, when we developed our ordinance proposal, it was largely after talking with our ally, Mr. Paul, who meets with us on a regular basis, and we have a great working relationship with him. And as I said, we gave our proposal to the Selectmen on January 15. A few weeks afterwards, the Selectmen developed a different proposal, and we held a workshop with them. And the reason that they expressed that they felt they needed to make a counterproposal was that ours did not address the problem, as they saw it. And one of the problems that they explained to us was, was going to be a problem that wasn't going, was the fact that numerous properties in town were receiving abatements due to these kinds of issues and related issues. And the Chair of the Board said that this was only going to snowball, and it was actually going to maybe cause, you know, some critical fiscal budget issues in the town. We had no concrete evidence at that time, so Chip, Vanelle and I, Chip being the Jeb person at this board, did a little research with the help of the assessor. And Kenny, Paul and Ted Kreizak met with the assessor one morning and went over 15 abatements that had been granted between the inception of this zoning to the present day. There were 15 total in number. From wind to wind? Excuse me? From wind to wind, the timeframe on that? The inception of this zoning, well. 2011? 9/29/11 to the present day. The town clerk had mentioned to us that there were five that were of questionable nature because there was no written description of why they were granted. They had been granted solely by the assessing firm, the Board of Assessment Review, and never been engaged with this process. Of those five, none, after discussing very briefly with the assessor, none were granted because of wetland proximity or infringement. Three were differing lengths of shoreline frontage. One was because of the building was not complete at the initial visit of the assessor. And a fifth one was a road frontage adjustment. All five properties, it's kind of interesting, were in the shoreline zone though. So myself, I felt a little uncomfortable on learning that because it seemed like we were kind of maybe getting the cart before the horse in our action of developing our proposal, but that's where it stands now. We have, we've made a recommendation, obviously, to put this on the ballot. We have not made a recommendation of reconsideration or anything else since that time. I think that was March 19, I think. As it stands now, we're standing behind this proposal as you see it today. The Selectmen's proposal is another matter which we will take up.
Sure. Richard. Yeah. Nick Neal, live on Milton Road. I think most everybody here is well aware of my property, consists of a 200-some-odd-year-old farmhouse and 10 acres of land, a little bit better than 10 acres of land. With this additional buffer, I didn't realize until a few months ago, when I happened to be talking to the code officer, it was something else, that my property was completely unbillable over 10 acres of land. And you can drive by anytime, you look at a nice three and a half acre field, it's probably at least 20 feet above any wetland, and out in the middle of the field is way more than 250 feet from the wetland. And to turn around and say, not only that I cannot develop that, build a house in there, but to even go one step further, that I can't even turn around and put a little porch on the front of my existing house. My whole property is completely unbillable according to the code officer because of these restrictions. I know you've tried to turn around and relax some of the restrictions since my last presentation, but the exceptions you gave serves no benefit to me whatsoever. I still cannot, my whole property is completely unbillable. And I think that's very, very unfair. When I turn around and see what is happening right on the lake, within the 250 foot of the shoreline, that you're allowing people to do and build, it's just, it's mind-boggling. You're not protecting. If you have any questions of what I'm trying to say, I invite you to take a ride with me anytime you want down on East Shore Drive on Loom Pond and see the development, and see the houses that are in there, and all of a sudden you can see the new ones that are building right in within 250 feet of the lake, putting in septic systems and everything else. Never mind being outside the shoreline zone, it just doesn't make sense at all to me.
Thank you, Richard. All I can say in our defense is we merely devise ordinances as the need arises, and I think that maybe that your situation is more of an enforcement issue. I don't know if we can solve every case that comes before the Code Enforcement.
You know, just to give you an example, for a number of years now, I've mentioned this to other members of the Planning Board over the years, they need to get out and go around the lakes, and you take like, especially on East Shore Drive, people, and this goes true of any of the lakes, people will own a shorefront lot right on the water, but they'll own a back lot. If all of a sudden there isn't enough room to put a septic system that meets current standards on the front lot, they should not be allowed to turn around and build another house on the back lot. They should turn around and be forced to turn around and reserve that back lot so that when they have to replace the existing septic system, that they can use the back lot, at least get it back another 100 feet from the waterfront. But when you turn around, I'm telling you, take a ride down East Shore Drive, and you'll see lots as narrow as 35 feet. And if you have even just a 25-foot wide building on there, you look, and all of a sudden there's five feet on this side of the building, five feet on that side of the building, you say, where is the septic system? Out back, they'll have a great big paved parking space behind the, between the house and the road. It's mind-boggling. And yet we allow them to turn around and build new buildings and new septic systems, new residences on the back lot across the street. You know, it's just mind-boggling to say, if anybody would like to take a ride with me at any time, I'll be glad to take you.
May we move on to the Silkman's proposal? Are we okay with? As I mentioned earlier, the Selectmen's proposal was made in March of this year, March 12. And Scott's in your white page packet, on page, the second page there, it should have a little green marcellan on the bottom saying Board of Selectmen. There are two, actually three pages of this. First item there, well, I'm going to have to change the sequence here because it's a little more self-explanatory or understandable when we go to page, the last page in the Selectmen's packet, which starts with 4224, wetlands of 200 contiguous acres. You're with me there? Okay. What has been proposed here is that, as you see from the, if you compare very quickly the chart that we looked at first on page one of the Planning Board page here, there are two columns, vertical columns nine and 10. One is Resource Protection within shoreline district, and one is, column 10 is Resource Protection outside of the shoreline district. Okay, we wanted to delineate that because those are what exist at present. The Selectmen are proposing that there is no more Resource Protection District outside of shoreline zone, i.e. all of these small wetlands are essentially removed from any protection. protection. So that, that change in definition qualifies what comes next. So essentially what they're, what they're saying is that the resource protection reverts back to what the state standard is currently, is resource protection is a ten acre or larger wetland, which would be these large green areas with an orange buffer around them on this map. And folks, can you please come up and look at the map later if you have a question about some of this stuff? Just a couple of examples, one would be on West Shore Drive, up by the bridge, there's a big culvert there that you go by on your way up to the boat launch. There's a, there's a huge wetland to the west of that, which is ten acres or greater. Down by Loom Pond, there's another contiguous wetland that stretches all the way across the road on Milton Hills Road. It's the wooded wetland that is next to the, what's the name of it? Milton Hill sign. People, hi, folks? People are over there. The Milton Hill sign, at the foot of the, by Iron Tail.
Key Rills?
What's that? Four?
Bailey.
Bailey. F W Bailey, is it? You probably, as you turn the corner at Iron Tail Sloan there, and you head up toward the school, there's a big wetland there on either side of the road. Another one, some of you might be familiar with.
That's the wetland, its impact of the.
Yeah.
There's another big wetland up by the, on the Seminole River, up by Flat Ground Road. Another big one that is attached with a body of water, not too many folks know it, is there, down in a hollow encompassed by County Road, Fox's Ridge in Milton Hills Road. If you go across on County Road, there's quite a hollow there with wetlands on both sides. That's a big ten acre wetland. Planning Board, when we were considering our proposal, did not want to intrude or make any allowances for development in those large ten acre wetlands because we thought they were critical as, for the three reasons that I spoke of earlier with Dr. Williams. Particularly, and this doesn't come from much, sometimes in town, but as wildlife habitat areas, they are critical. And certainly, well, the other two as well, the recharge and stormwater affected storage areas. So the second part of the Selectman's proposal is that wetlands of two or more contiguous acres in the shoreline district. Again, that would be approximate to the Great Ponds. They'll have the same buffer allocated to them as we described earlier, that the current, current exists in, outside of shoreline zone with our smaller wetland areas of two acres or greater. So there would be the sliding scale, starting at two acres yields a buffer of fifty feet. And actually, because of its proximity to the shoreline district, that would not kick in because of state law, tells us that you can't build closer than a hundred feet to the shoreline in the shoreline district. And we've asked this of Kenny, the, the minimal standard in the shoreline district then for wetlands proximity would be one hundred feet because of the same rules that apply to proximity to the Great Pond apply to contiguous wetlands. Right? We asked him that the other day. Anybody remember that? Everybody confused?
Yes.
Yes.
Try to work my way through this.
One of the things that just occurred to me. I'm very confused because all of a sudden, what I see here, according to you, your head here, first page is the planning board proposed amendment. And the next set of pages is supposed to be the Board of Selectmen proposed changes.
Correct.
And they're actually all planning board changes. I find no difference in any wording.
The difference being, if you look on the.
Well, the land use chart helps to, to show. If you look at the land use chart on the Selectman's proposal, resource protection is still just one column, whereas on the planning board proposal, it's two columns now. And that's part of the crux of the difference between the two proposals.
As I say, when I look at the resource protected, it's all the same.
And the Selectman's proposal, number two, would allow this exemption within the shoreline zone.
Richard, I think the key page is, in the Selectman's packet there, the two-page prepaid packet, under the definition four, two, two, four, that would be the last page in the Selectman's packet, where they have, and this is maybe too clever, my crowd is a bit confusing, they have struck what formerly used to read wetlands of two or more contiguous acres in the resource protection district and the associated buffer.
Well, I don't think they crossed anything out. They just popped that right in there. It used to pretty much read what it would say without that, which is wetlands of two or more contiguous acres and the associated buffer, which shall be covered by this falls. So which encompassed the whole town at that point. And now they've narrowed it in on the shoreline district.
They're seeing there's no two acre wetlands outside shore.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. You see that, Richard?
I'm not sure.
Well.
This is one of the reasons why, you know, as we go through this, this is the truth over the years, and probably one of the reasons why I never even picked this up, you know, I admit, I'm either sleeping in the switch or whatnot, but as I say, when you're trying to interpret the maps and trying to interpret these things, when you're proposing these things, and I, like many people, depend on you people get down into the nuts and bolts of the thing and know what you're doing and have faith in you, and you, that's what you recommend. So get to the town meeting and say, yep, okay. And, but all of a sudden, this was enacted in two thousand and eleven, here it is, two thousand and fifteen, and I'm just finding out that I, the impact, that my whole property is ten acres, almost eleven acres, acres are totally unbuildable.
So I think the key, maybe I'll shut up for a minute. Someone else concisely explain the difference between the planning board proposal and the Board of Selectmen's proposal pertaining to definition of wetlands of two or more acres, if they would please.
I'll try. With the Selectman's proposal, all of the buffers anywhere in town will be encroachable, whether it's ten acres or two acres. With our proposal, with the planning board's proposal, you would only be able to encroach on what we've come to call inland woodland wetlands, which are not contiguous with the lakes. And there is a map that Ken's been working on. We have to go through the state to change the, the ten acre ones. So that was why we really didn't feel we had time to do that when we were told to write this ordinance. The ones that would disappear would all be these little scattered ones. And according to Ken, it's about a thousand acres, more or less scattered through the town. These, those that are in green, the light green, would all still remain as woodland, but they would be, you would be allowed to build in them, on the buffers, if, with the conditional use permit, et cetera, et cetera. Does that help?
Yep. Thank you, Jason. A thousand acres of non-shore buffer?
Of inland woodland, not contiguous. That was Ken's guess. He estimated it using the, the map system that we have on the website.
Just a suggestion, it's not all forested wetland. There is some open water. There's, there's a lot of open water.
Yeah, there's a lot of open water. There's some just, it's wetland, wetland. You know, some of them are.
Forested.
Eight and a half acres instead of ten acres. So there's the one, anything that's under ten acres that's not contiguous to a, a great pond are the ones that with Selectmen, you'll be able to build off it.
So why did they insert in the shoreline, shoreline district on the last page?
Well, this enables them to keep the two acres. So anywhere where it's contiguous, contiguous wetland, whether, instead of the state law, is ten acres or more, they're still, they're, they're retaining the two, two to eight, two to ten acre within the contiguous areas. So it's two to infinity, as long as it's contiguous with a large body of water. And those that are not contiguous with a large body of water are the ones that the Selectmen are suggesting just disappear.
And which constitute about a thousand acres.
Constitute about a thousand acres. And they're all in places that are headed somewhere, and most of them are not buildable, but I mean, it's just.
And, and the planning board here has already gone ahead and reaffirmed that their, their proposal is the one that you're going to stick with? Is that correct?
Well, our position is, we were asked to write these, we were asked to write both of them. I mean, the first one, we were, we were asked to write, the Selectmen didn't really give us any guidelines. We came up with our, a solution. The Selectmen didn't like it, so they came up with another solution. So it's our role to represent all of them. We're not really in a position to endorse one or the other upfront, but we wrote one of them, so.
So unfortunately, we don't live in Long Island where you can say yes, no, or none of the above. I would, I would differ from Justice's interpretation, but I, I feel as, as planning board members, this is not an application per se that is in front of us with an, with a, an individual where there are issues of due process. So this policy, whatever policy is adopted here, is just that, a policy. And being a planning board member, being a planning board, I think we have the obligation, first of all, to think through these proposals and make a recommendation. Otherwise, I don't see what our purpose is.
Are you asking like when you're in the voting booth? Each, each of these questions is going to have a yes or no.
Yeah, or, okay.
Each of these will have a yes or no.
So you can say no.
So each of these could be voted down. If someone would say as a vote.
I see.
But as a planning board, I think we can absolutely endorse the first one. We voted on it. And we'd like to, in this packet here, the number one, the one that was brought by the planning board, there's no reason that we can't endorse, to stand behind that one. And the other two, we haven't voted on it as to how we feel about them, but I don't, I don't know. I mean, I stand behind the one we came up with because that's what they asked.
I'm just going to say one more thing and then I promise I'm going to shut up.
No, it's all right. We, this is a public.
It just.
Try to bring it up now.
It seems to me that we don't realize as Americans how precious water is going to become very soon. Los Angeles is building a billion dollar desalinization plant right now to be ready next year. Okay? And they only have a year's worth of water left. We're blessed with a lot of water, but the question is, it's the foundation for our tax base here in Acton, number one. Number two, to have clean, clear lakes is almost an exception to the rule of the United States at this point in time. And once they get contaminated and all of the pollution cycle begins, it's very hard to correct and to mitigate. And I would just hope that this group, you've done a really hard job very well, but I would think that you need to get it clarified for the voters when it comes to the town vote. From what I can gather, yours is the lesser of the two evils, but the best thing would probably, for the sake of the lakes, be a continued ordinances the way they stand now. And maybe I've misunderstood all of this, yours, as I can see here, is the lesser of the two evils, but I think we're going to make a terrible mistake in the long run. We are slowly going to kill our lakes rather than doing it quickly by eliminating a thousand acres of buffer, which will keep the wetlands that feed the lakes clean and pristine. I will say no more thank you for putting up with my questions. It may be worthwhile just putting in context what we've gone over with you folks tonight with the actual ballot that you're going to see on June ninth. The first two questions are the ones that were proposed, that are being proposed by the Selectman Board. Question three is the proposal proposed by the planning board. And as a planning board member and as a citizen, I have asked to please allow both the Finance and War Committee and the planning board to make a written recommendation on these, which I would assume in fairness to the public and to the board's thinking, we would take a vote on after the April thirtieth official public hearing. And the tradition on recommendations appearing is, on ballot items is somewhat mixed, but there is a provision whereby they can appear on the proposal as drafted for the voters in the foyer of the, where Jennifer spreads out the materials that you're going to look at in the voting booth. It's been my experience in the past that that's where, that's the venue during which a written recommendation can be expressed by Finance and War and Planning Board. Do you, do, just, do you have any recollection on that, Nancy or Richard?
As far as I know, anything that's a referendum question like that that goes for voters, I don't think we make a recommendation on it.
No.
It's on the warrant that is presented to town meeting ballot.
This is going to be on a ballot.
This is going to be, these are going to be ballot questions.
Yeah, you're going to have to go in and read these things and figure them out.
Yeah. So, so don't make a recommendation on.
If there's no, if there's no opportunity to make a recommendation, you know, in print, I would, I'm going to suggest to the board that we, we at least have a show of hands to express our recommendation following the meeting on, on April thirtieth.
Yeah.
Well, I lie, I have another question. Do you think that the average voter going into a booth and presented with this array of options will know what it's all about?
No.
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 In which case, I think that having it outside of a, of a village meeting where people can stand up and ask questions and make up their mind would be truly a better venue for this as far as decision making on the part of the citizens of this town.
It wasn't our decision.
No, I'm, I'm just saying.
This is the first time the president's asked this question.
Yes.
Oh, I wonder. Yes. Well, all I can say is that we're going to, there will be, the official public hearing will be held on April thirtieth at seven o'clock upstairs in the lodge and hall. And the reason, we were, we were, we had this meeting with some difficulty. I'll just say that. We had difficulty advertising it and we had difficulty holding it. But if there is a need, we, we are well, well within our rights to have another meeting after the. to have another meeting after the public hearing on April 30th. We have a full month there. We're not voting on these questions until June 9. So maybe given what you've said tonight, when Chip gets back, we'll discuss the merits of another informational meeting following the public hearing on the 30th. We'll see how the public hearing goes. Hopefully, we have a good turnout. Any, any other questions or comments?
Is it possible to send out information to the voters and stress the importance of them coming to the, whatever you want to call it?
Hearings.
The hearings.
Yeah. I mean, we, a citizen can write a little letter to the editor if they wanted. That's been done. And there are, there are going to be advertisements appearing, I think, three more times in the newspaper pertaining to the April 30th meeting.
I hope there's a better turnout than what we get for the regular June meeting.
The Selectmen will be there. You'll be able to find out more of the story behind it. They're going to have information that we don't even have yet, so.
Could I, just a recommendation? I would like to ask the Board to really consider, at least in the future, this may be too late now for this one, but when you come up with proposals like this, everything isn't black and white out there in the world today around us. And so what I would like to see is turn around and provide a caveat, you know, in the audit, so that if there's extenuating circumstances, then a person can come to you and turn around, and hopefully you can turn around, just whether it's using common sense or whatnot, just take a look at it and then be able to grant an exception. I know you don't like that. You like the happenstance, all of a sudden, you just follow the rules. That's the easy way out. But there's a number of cases, I think, over the years where you either allow the code officer to be able to make a decision, you know, an applicant comes in, and all of a sudden, if the code officer has to go out and make a site evaluation, then it may be an exception because, say, a lot of the things that you're doing here is based on maps. And who develops these maps? These maps, and a lot of them are based on information out of Washington or some other place with, you know, at the federal level. And these people are using satellite images and whatnot. Things may not be exactly what you think they are. I can show you where on a lot of my map, across the street from my house, it shows a stream up through the field. There is no stream there. There never has been. There may be an underwater, maybe an underwater stream, but it's all a great big field up through there. And so a lot of things aren't exactly what you see on these maps. And so by having in the audit the ability to make a site evaluation and then turn around and make a determination, I think it'd make it a lot easier for them.
Yeah. Well, both these proposals are geared towards that, doing that in this case.
But, you know, like, you put in these exceptions, and also, you know, you put in such tight-reach exceptions that none of them apply to me. You know, my barn alone exceeds the 1,500 square feet. So that means my house and everything else, everything. I can't even put a, probably a doghouse up there, you know? I can't build a little shed. I shouldn't need a shed if I got a 40 by 50 barn. But it takes, I think you know what I'm trying to, you know, drive at. I'm just completely limited in what I can do. And it's going to turn around and depreciate the value of my property.
All set? Thank you, folks, for your interest. If you're still confused upon leaving here tonight, I apologize. Pass a visit on the 30th maybe. Okay. Thank you for coming. Although during that, this file here. The role of the minister of Public Affairs. This is the one that's dated April 9th. Thank you, Walter. Thank you very much. So our next meeting is May 7th? Is that the one there?
That's six.
That's when you have the. That's, that's Barron's Florida hearing, is it?
Let's hand it back to us.
And it's ordered, change?
Make a motion if you think it is.
Sorry.
I don't, I don't, maybe, I don't think I seconded it because I wasn't here for the Eagle Second Meeting. So I'll check it out. Maybe I was out of order there.
I'll check the middle.
Okay. I saw it, it's okay.
I wasn't there for the next. Any, I don't think we have any.
So do you go through to that, so the Eagle Second Meeting? When? The night? I think I wasn't aware that was an official meeting. I thought that was a.
We had Chip want to.
It wasn't advertised.
It was a public meeting. It was posted, it was posted correctly, so to make it, to make it a meeting. That's when they voted, they also voted on the Barron's, this West School House hearing, if it's accepted.
Just to set the date.
We had to set the date because I wouldn't have time to post everything.
And we have to hold a hearing in Ottawa, and we should have set the date.
Any other business? No? Okay. Most of you agree?
So we are upstairs.
It's the 16th, right?
Did I? Yeah. I think this happens for sure.
Yeah. And I don't know what else is on the agenda. Is Chip going to be back?
Says he is.
Okay. Thank you, folks.